Thank you. All right, it is 5:32. This is a special meeting of the Eastwood County Improved District Board of Directors. Today is Tuesday, July the 16th. I'm sorry, Monday, July the 16th. We always begin with the prayer. The 17th, I'm so sorry, it's Monday. We always begin with the prayer and the pledge. If everyone will please rise, Director Patterson will lead us in the prayer, and I'll just direct his opponent to lead us in the pledges.
Hello, we just thank you for this day and opportunity to come together, make decisions that work for the community. And just thank you for all the blessings you've given us and give us safe travel. And just be with all our family and friends not here and attendance today. Just thank you for all the blessings. Just thank you.
Amen.
You don't mean the pledge?
My pledge is to declare the name of the last state of the year, and to the government for which you stand. One nation under God, indivisible, for whose people we serve.
The text of the pledge.
On the text of the pledge, for the nations of these nations, one must obey, or none shall have. One, and just.
Okay, so the very first item on our agenda is to discuss a plan relative to 2017-18 festivals in our community.
I do, I got a couple things to say. Originally, we did the first Fire and Ice Festival. The ideal behind that was to give something back, free to our community, offer some entertainment, stuff for the kids. We actually replaced a festival, I believe, and we switched some festivals around. And in my opinion, at this time, in regards to our last festivals, I feel like we should just concentrate on having the festivals for the kids and stay out of the music side of it.
And I agree with that. I mean, we tried, we decided to step out of the box, try something to increase the revenue in our area, increase the presence of people outside of our community in our area. We selected a company to do that for us, since we are not in that particular business. And it didn't go the way we expected it to go, the way we intended it to go. And I agree with that. I think we should stick to the festivals. I like the idea of the Fire and Ice Festival without the music. Still have all of the snow, all the, everything for the day, and the big fireworks at night. But me personally, I think that the music part of it, that's really outside of what we do.
I agree also. I think we'll probably need to wait at least three years when that whole development is done. Different time. There were just a lot of factors that we didn't figure in when we looked at the possibility of making, bringing in more outside revenue. And it'd be interesting to see what the revenues for the month of May turn out to be, if they're higher, when we get that next report, looking at our, you know, that we do in our regular reporting report. I think that's what, about a month away, right?
Too much time here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because Frank, you said that usually when you have events like this, that the area businesses will see an increase in their sales by 70%. There's a formula?
Yeah, the businesses in Valley Ranch, businesses in Valley Ranch, all said they saw that 5% increase. I'm not gonna say they all, because they all went open, but the ones that we talked to said they saw that 5% increase, as well as the hoteliers in the area. So again, that'll factor into your overall revenue for the year.
I feel the same way, that maybe we should get out of the music business, considering. But I also have heard there was some planning already done, and there might be some disappointed people. I'd like to look at that a little bit before we make that 100% decision. But even if we did continue with the music, I think we should go extremely small. Quit the big talent and maybe just go local or something. It'd be a lot easier to manage, a lot easier to deal with, if we did continue to do that. But I heard somewhere, I don't remember who else talking to, that there was a lot of people already counting on the Fire and Ice. I personally think we should just get out of the music business, but I wanted to look into how big it's already been.
I think the people count on us more for the kids, so I could be wrong. Can I make a comment about that? I think we don't have any business, like I've always said, in the entertainment business. Now, as far as music, I'm the person that thinks it's wrong that if we don't do the Fire and Ice for the community, because I don't think we were designed to make money. It was something that we were just gonna get back through the community. And I think that if we stick with local talent and keep our budget down, you know, like Sundance, Jahor, Jason Cassidy, you know, have something like that, you know, keep it, the budget down. I don't think we need to be bringing somebody big, you know, like Dogg, that launch power and all this stuff, then people cost a lot of money. But I think we can keep our budget low and still have something to give back to the community the way with the science. Personally, I don't think that we should take something away from the community because of the mess of capacity that we had with Rock the Bridge. And that's my opinion.
The other thing to add, though, is we did that and used local, and the turnout was minimal on the first one. The turnout was high for the kids' side, which is the festivals that we normally do, and for the music side, there was very little turnout. And then at the same time, we put all that stress on our staff to try to get all this stuff in place.
And I think too, that what we would need to look at as a board is that I believe there will be those, like you said, Stephen, in the community that would be disappointed if we don't have some entertainment. And then there will be those who will be disappointed if we do. So we're gonna have to look long and hard at which road we want to take, because 100% of the people are not gonna be happy no matter what we do. So what we need to do is look at it and see what is the best benefit to the communities. How will it best benefit them? Will it benefit all ages if we do the music for the older people and the adults, and then the kids for the festival side? I don't know, that's something we need to, we need to look at.
I wouldn't hear when they got into the music business. I attended Fire and Ice. I didn't attend any of the music venues. I went and watched the kids play, and I went home, I was freezing to death.
It was, it was a very...
But I don't know how you ever got started in the music business. I don't understand that.
It was just an idea that was brought up, that, you know, let's do this for the community, let's go a step further, let's step out of the box and see if we can do more for the community. That's what it was all intended to do, was to do more, to give back, to give additional... We do so much for the kids, and that is extremely important. But we also have adults that live here, and adults that like to get out, and with or without their children. So the intent was to benefit everybody across the board. We didn't know that it was gonna be the coldest day of the year. There's no way we could've known that. We had no idea that the Texans were gonna be in the playoffs. You know, so we had, but going into it, because you cannot predict those things, it was, you know, it just, it was what it was. But it was nothing that was, it was intended for good, and it just didn't turn out. It was just like with the Rock the Bridge. That was intended for good. We don't make rash decisions. We don't fly by the seat of our pants. We talk these things over, we pray for guidance, and we make decisions based on that. And it did not go the way that any others intended for it to go.
One good thing, we're fast learners. So we won't repeat that anytime soon. There's a saying that everyone wants to hire someone that's experienced or worked with experienced people, because they never make mistakes. The only way you get experience is by making mistakes.
Well, and going on that, what Director Pearson said, when we decided to do Splash Pass for the community, we sought out an expert to help us, guide us, because that's what they did. And it was the same thing with the music festival. We sought out an expert, because that was not what we do. And we have to rely on the expertise of those that we see to give us good information. So, you know, coming back to this, I don't know which is gonna be the best way to go. Do we, I think the festival, we definitely should do the festival. But the question is, do we want to do? I mean, I think if we're going to do it, I agree that it needs to be local entertainment. Yes, ma'am?
I'm on Braylon Martin, down here on the music end of it. I think we should have it. I don't think we should have 20 bands like we had the first Fire and Ice. I think that was way too many people. If we're gonna do it, maybe just two, two bands and local bands and have it that way. But if you just go out there and just throw everything away because somebody made a mistake, then you might as well just go hide and pause at some point. That's what you're gonna do. But you're gonna, the festival was a great idea. I was there. I helped tents down earlier when we were going down in the mountains. I picked up tents and blew over. But this time, it's gonna be in September?
October.
October. So then October, it's still gonna be hot, and it's gonna be, it's that. So I think personally, that we should make, see two bands. We don't have to have no high dollar band. Sundance head, if he wants too much money, then, you know, he'll just have to go to somebody else. At least two bands, if nothing else. That's what, I just don't think we should just give up on no music whatsoever. Or if we're gonna do that, then we should shut it off at 5 o'clock in the afternoon, or 6 o'clock.
Well, and we do the fireworks, now that was, everybody really, really enjoyed, even those that live in, that were not there, that live in Valley Ranch, that were able to actually see it. That was really a big, a big part.
And we could take some of that money that we paid bands with and make a better fireworks show. Hire somebody that's got, that can do a good fireworks show.
It's gonna be hard to beat that one we had last year.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, you're gonna, you know, so, you know, instead of spending money on eight or 10 bands, spend half of the amount of money on a bigger fireworks show. But I don't think we should give up the bands or whatever. I just don't think we should have them. So I think, how many bands did we have last year? 10 or 12?
Seven.
Seven.
I know every time one step off the stage, another came over. Man, that was just way too many. I mean, we had way too many bands, but I still think we should stay with the Fire and Ice festival. And I say two bands, you know.
And if you'll remember, halfway through, we had a hometown hero award, where we recognized an individual from our community for all of the outstanding community service. And we need to continue to do that. That is, you know, everybody that's in this community, there's so many people doing giving back, and we need to continue to do that. We definitely need to continue to do that.
Well, the bands are here to keep the people there, but it was just, I think it would be a lot better in October, because you're not gonna have 30 degree weather and north wind going 30 miles an hour. It's a lot better time. But I agree with what these guys are saying. I mean, we need to have, we need to have somebody to pull the people in, but it's really for the kids, I mean, it's for our community.
It's for the community, but we also need to do for the adults, as we do for the children. I mean, they're for the kids, they don't just bring them and dump them off. So they're there with them, and they need to be, they should have something. Yes, ma'am?
When we have our back-to-school backpack special and supply special, that's a good time to advertise to all the parents, because that place, you know, this place is packed.
It is. What did we have budgeted for, do you remember, on the hand, for the Fire and Ice?
For Fire and Ice, uh, for Fire and Ice last year, we spent about $371,000. This year, we had budgeted $300,000. So about $100,000 for entertainment, and 200 for all the setup, fireworks, all the other stuff that's there. Again, if we wanna take some funds out of the entertainment and put it more toward other stuff that we can have at the event, that's just, you know, adjusting our resources to a different area, and we can do that. So, again, you tell us what you want to do.
Of course, there's not the wrong setting, I mean...
Again, that's what I'm saying. Tell us what you want us to do, and we'll go do it.
So if we already have bought it, 100 grand for entertainment, then if we can get it for 30, then we need, we need to put seven of it in the bank.
Absolutely. Just tell us what you want to do, it's a very simple process. Let us know what you want to do, and we'll do it.
What if we do, continue with entertainment like that? I mean, I'd like to consult with the attorney, but I'd like to look at other companies that might help us with that.
Would I do that?
Well, I think I'd rather have that decision, I mean, a discussion, or a consultation with the attorney before the beginning. But I'm not happy with the performance of the company we had at this past festival.
2:42?
5:42.
5:42.
I don't see why we should have to hire a promoter, I mean, just to hire a couple of local bands. I mean, you don't have, make up, probably base them and hire for Sundance. They aren't good, they won't operate like that. They're gonna do it professional, they're gonna want contracts, and they're not just gonna do a handshake agreement, because then you're gonna end up, and it'll really pay off. But what I'm saying, these are local boys, man. They're in the position they're in right now because of this community. Right now, if they don't care to step up...
Yeah, but if you remember, Martin, when they were here last, at Fire and Ice, they all had, they had their specifics about what they wanted to eat, what kind of food they wanted, what kind of drink, and they were very specific about it. I mean, it was not just, let's give you some, you know, some Subway sandwiches. They were very, very specific about what they wanted to eat and to drink. So if, even though they're from this community, if they, if they have a manager, they're not gonna be able to go around their manager to make their own kind of a deal. They won't be able to do that, even if they want to. So I don't see that we could do it, I don't see that that's feasible.
I don't think that's what Martin is saying. I think, what he's saying is that we ought to be able to enter a contract with them without using an outside person.
Promoter? Did I misunderstand what you said?
Yeah, but we still have to deal with their management.
Exactly. We don't need to pay a promoter to deal with their management.
But we do need to have somebody on our side to make sure that what we're doing is, you know, we need to have, if it's a contract, it needs to be looked at and made sure to protect our interests. Whether that's an entertainment attorney, you know, somebody that that's what they do, because they're good guys and everything, but they're not gonna be the ones negotiating these contracts. It's their management team that does. So we're not gonna deal with the entertainers directly, regardless of how they, you know, that this is their home, and that they want to perform here. Their management team doesn't care. And that's just how it is. So if we're gonna do that, then we, I agree with Stephen, that we need to cover, we need to cover all of our bases, well, like we did before. We had, we just didn't have an entertainment attorney. And I think that that's, if we're gonna do that, even on this small scale, we need to make sure we're covered.
I didn't hear what Stephen was saying, was he saying you did enough, but you use this, that's what it is.
I don't want to use the one that we used on this past...
I heard you.
That's why I say, I don't want us to speak any further without consultation with the attorneys. I don't want to say something wrong.
Okay. I also don't want us to make a rush decision on the entertainment, too, because we're pushing probably real close to the deadline, when that can get done. And then if we go to rush, then we're gonna end up making mistakes. That's why I feel like we should just do the festival for the kids and re-group, because it's already August, September, October, you know, less than three months. And if you don't have them booked already, you're gonna, I think, end up in a bind.
Or they already get booked somewhere.
Get booked somewhere else, and then you're gonna end up with not getting performers that the community's gonna like. It's easy to say, just get like a local band, or maybe somebody that doesn't cost as much, but then people aren't gonna show up to see them either. That's my opinion of it.
And another thing to look at is, we have, we have other locals besides Jason Cassidy and Josh Ward and Sundance, who are local bands who would love to entertain. That would entertain for free. I mean, seriously, there are people out here that have to watch bands. They would love to do that. And we wouldn't have to go through a management team or promoter to do that. And we wouldn't have to do it today. I mean...
Do we already have any agreements signed?
And maybe this is a discussion we need to refer with our attorney in executive session. Yes?
How hard would it be to make the phone call, since it's coming? We can have a email or take a copy of the contract, so what, we can review it?
Are you talking about coordinating the, for example, I tried to get, what's his name? Josh Ward, or, yeah, I tried to get him to do something for me, and he told me personally, he said, "You have to talk to Charlie."
Well, we can get over there and ask him.
Well, Charlie would do it by the promoter, so...
But it is...
They don't wanna deal directly with you, my contractor.
What is wrong with talking to the promoter? I mean, why, why is such bad doctor? And I thought, that's what they were for, send that and discuss it.
I personally believe that we're not experts in this, and we don't know what I'm doing.
Well, we're not experts, I agree, as I said, but there are people out there who are experts. So somebody has got to either say, okay, we're gonna get this person, this person, or go back to Scott's recommendation, and just not even do it.
And we have to decide if we want to go to, defer an expense, do we want to, do we want to spend the money to hire somebody to do that, or just go with what Scott said, and let's just do the festival, and let's just do this next year or the year after that?
We know that kid festivals have been successful for us, and that's what we've done. The intention was good for the first one, to give something a little different back to the community, but by what's happened, I feel like we just need to rein it in and just do it to kids until we can have more time to think about it, just because October's around the corner, and we're gonna be stuck.
Well, and the festivals, the other festivals we do, they didn't start out with the big crowds either. They worked their way up. They didn't, it's taken 10 years or more to get to where they are. And yes, we need to continue to do that. So I think that maybe what we need to do is just put the music on a back burner, maybe think about it for down the line. I mean, I don't know, it's not, it's not a perfect science, and no matter which way we go...
Well, we don't know the weather, it's what the card is. Like this, like this back-to-school bash, when we have all wrapped up the people out here, let's beat them below zero, see how many people come.
No, you're exactly right.
How far are we on the Fire and Ice for October? How far have we gone? I know I've seen it advertised a little bit.
Okay. What's the question? How far have we gone?
How far have we gone so far?
As far as expenses?
The planning and advertising and...
We've secured the site, we started paying some vendors. Of the $300,000 that we have budgeted, I think we've committed to around $71,000 so far with vendors. And that's, that's where we are as of today. Give or take, give or take a little bit.
How much of that would be for the kids? In other words, if we wanted to do the kid festival, how much extra is it for the music side, including people who set up the stage and workers and stuff? In other words, what would the festival be just for the kids?
You put $100,000 in for entertainment, correct? And for the rest of it, it's for the, for everything else, right?
Right, and the $100,000 doesn't seem tremendously high when you look at it in regards to this festival. But when you look at it in regards to what we just went through, $100,000, to me, we should just save it.
Why are y'all scared of it?
I'm not scared of anything.
You gotta be scared of something.
No, I'm not, I'm not afraid of anything.
I can understand, I understand we all are familiar to it, and I understand it, Fire and Ice. But, I mean, if you're gonna take away and give back to the community, I'm gonna go back with Brenda. You take a lot of, of, uh, adults, they're not gonna come. They won't bring their kids if they don't get prepared for it. I just think that we're, I think, personally, I think we fight the nose off the spider face by not having at least a couple of entertainers. That's what, that's my personal opinion, so, you know.
And that's what I say, but why should we punish the community for something that...
We already done done.
But we never had it before. There's always something that's paid that, from the community, I just don't feel right about that.
But we never had it before, until we did the one. So it's not like we're pulling something out that's a longstanding...
But again, there will be those who'll be upset if we do, and then there will be those who'll be upset if we don't.
We're gonna be blessed on Facebooks if you do, you're gonna be blessed on Facebooks if you don't. And so, I mean, it's already getting like the public street out there. It's already, you start reading some of the stuff that's posted out there. 90% of it's not true, but, you know, I think it's, but I still think we should have at least two bands, or, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, the Fire, this would be the second year for the Fire and Ice, and Brenda made a good point, that it does take several years of repetition to build up. So I certainly could go with having a music entertainment but scaled-down version.
That's what I said.
I agree with that. That's why I said, you know, at least one or two. Even if you just had one band, if you had just one decent band, it don't have to be, it don't have to be, uh, Billy Ray Cyrus or Aggie Williams, you know? I tell you what, Brian, you get here, you can get a lot of people. But, I mean, you know, but just have a band, an Aggie decent band, that, you know, and just one, just have some kind of entertainment, other than, than just with the kids.
If we did continue the music thing, we're talking about this is for us, this isn't for everybody else. If everybody else comes, you know, that's great, but, I don't know, Sundance, Naked in Vegas, and then just stream local bands that only draw local crowds from there. Is we do that?
I can tell you from the college events, the one band that brings out all the students are the Cygo bands.
Yeah, we had that last year, and they were good.
Yeah, they were.
They, and they, they were, they were really good. But I think that, I mean, it just seems, it sounds to me like we're going to need to compromise, do something, and not do it all together, do something, but just on a much scaled-down level, because we're, we, either way, no matter which way we go, we're not gonna win. So if we just compromise, instead of doing what we were planning, spending $100,000, scale it down and spend one year thirty.
Well, regardless of whether we're gonna sell tickets, right?
No, it's not crazy. I mean, that's the good thing about the fest, and as y'all know...
And that's the failure was the ticket, right?
Well, as y'all know, that was the very first event ever that Incendio's ever charged for, but it wasn't geared for this community. It was set up to bring people from outside of the community into our area. That it was never intended to, because those particular bands never would have been chosen for this area. And of course, that's a discussion we've had several times, way before the event ever occurred. And, you know, again, there's a lot of factors that went into, for whatever the reasons, it was the disaster that it ended up being. And it was what it was. And we, it's our responsibility, we made the decision. We were given the information by the entertainment company that we hired, and we went with that. And hindsight, it's always better, but we can't change what we did.
Yeah, because one band, they all, they didn't guarantee nothing. They never even guaranteed to show up other than put the band on. But they said that one entertainer had like over 3,000 followers that never wore they did. But that entertainer didn't bring in the 3,000.
But it's not, I mean, it's not that it's his fault that he didn't bring them in. It's, because it's not, I mean, he's...
They was here for the people of...
That's it.
So it was the wrong, it was the wrong music for this area, or not, you're right?
Well, it definitely was.
Well, it definitely was for this area, I agree 100%.
We had talked about that, and, but again, because it was a paid event, we did not anticipate any of our people from our community to buy tickets to the event. It was to bring others from outside of the area to bring them in and spend their money here.
Which was a mistake.
Denial sign, absolutely, it was a mistake.
You should always start here, in my opinion, you work out.
I hope we all agree that we're not gonna do another paid event for quite a while.
I think that's, yeah, across the board, yeah, because we won't do that, so... But I think maybe we should just go ahead and compromise and have something just on a much scaled-down level.
I think $100,000 is a lot of money for entertainment. I think we can do it for about a third of that.
Yeah, plus it's one year thirty, and then...
Could we amend the budget for it?
Well, we can amend the budget anytime, or we can take it...
Or we can just trust that we'll spend less on the event?
Yeah, again, all you gotta do is tell us what to do, and we'll do it. So tell us what you want us to do, and then it's up to us to go execute it. So that's a pretty simple equation, you know? Tell us what you want us to do, and we'll go do it.
No, we'll hit.
It would be a hundred thousand for entertainment though. That wasn't counting the stage, correct? The setup, tear down?
No, that's just the counter.
And, and those, those aren't cheap.
Where's the pavilion gonna be by October?
Second.
Where's the pavilion status by October?
The pavilion will not be ready. It is not in, uh, a shape that you would want to hold a venue in just due to the drainage. And if you recall, right after all the dirt was moved, we had several just down cores. And you got big ruts and you have, it, it needs some repair work done. So, our developer over there needs to go through and redo the amphitheater. And at this point, we're just planning on utilizing the same area that we did for the last event. So.
Take the stage, even?
No, just the, the parking lot area like we did for the last.
So, we're not gonna be inside this time?
Absolutely not.
So, if we do the entertainer, we set them up outside?
Just like the Rock the Ranch, the, uh, the stage will be on the outside and that will be in the area where the grass is between the parking lot and, uh, uh, around our park. So, just like it was set up for, uh, for the last event, it'll be the same type of venue. So, again, you know, if, if y'all like to look at the site layout, we, we can let you do it. If you wanna leave some stuff around, give us some guidance. What you want us to do and we're happy to, to make adjustments.
Could we maybe, maybe Frank get a, uh, a bid on some bands and the cost for the stage and all that setup and, and get, get the bids and then let us decide?
Sure.
Um, because that way, rather than just committing outright, we maybe use a couple of bands and how much it's gonna cost to set the stage up and tear it down and then look at it, look at it after we know what the cost is gonna be.
So, again, starting out with that, give me some band names that you want.
And then we'll go and do that though, time wise?
We'll, we'll approach them as soon as they have an interest. You know, when you call someone, they'll be like, "I'm, I'm booked. Sorry, can't talk to you." Uh, okay, call somebody up, "I'm booked." Well, I can do it that weekend if it's a four hour event, seven or six hour event. So, then you get into all that. So.
Frank, is anybody already on the hook for the, for the thing? I mean, it's not October. The, the, is there any contracts that's already out there? For performers? Yeah?
No, no. We've made, we've made offers, but there's, there's been nothing, uh.
So, we're zero anyway?
As of today, there is. We have, we have contractually signed no one as an entertainer. Only music entertainment. We have some other entertainers coming in, juggling, Fire Knights, all that kind of stuff. You know, those people are locked in, but not, uh, not on the music side.
And we're not late doing it?
Well, we are late. You normally need to do these events a year to eighteen months in advance. But, but again.
We're talking three months?
Yeah, but again, we can, we can put some feelers out and we'll come back and if you wanna meet next week, let's meet next week. You can pick the bands and we can go from there. You know, I don't know how she wants to approach it, but, you know.
I felt like we should ask Kelly's advice or somebody who's actually gonna be the one putting all that together if you even have time to do that at this point. I, I mean, honestly, you know, if, you know, if you do or not, we don't wanna throw that on you and you don't have time and then, I mean.
Or was this something you were working on anyway?
Well, I mean, the offers were out there for the, the talent. Um, you know, some of them we had received word back that they were not interested or there was a conflict. Um, others, there were, I think, two or three still out there. Uh, one was surprisingly high, uh, for one of our local people. Um, so when you talk about thirty thousand dollars for a talent, uh, that would have wiped it out. Um, as far as doing it, I mean, we're already in the process, so it's not a problem putting out those offers for whatever talent that you want to. Obviously, they've gotta be available on that date. So, that wipes out a lot of options. Um, but you know, I think that the biggest thing at this point, other than that, is getting a company that would build the stage. And we talked about concert promoters, but the thing that affects us a lot is the concert production. You've got stage production that you've got to do. That, that is a big cost. Tara thinks maybe it was thirty thousand dollars for the stage. So, you've got to hire, you know, you've got to get the stage equipment and making it now.
Yeah, but there's no way you can sound that extravagant for this. They're not, that, that's a different stage. I mean, what you should have done for the couple of goingies, the goingies, I mean, had set a trailer up out there and did like we do for East Coast for the fair and for like, like.
Rock the Ranch, I think, was a company out of Dallas, I think, uh, for Fire Knights last year or is it a company out of Houston? Um, I'm, I don't have the exact figures for what we used, um, in front of me for Fire Knights. But, um, you know, it's, it's something that we were gonna, whether whoever did it, we were gonna have to look at anyway. But, um, some of the additional costs, I mean, we had agreed just about, I think it's seventy-one, seventy-four thousand that we're at right now. Uh, then there was a hundred thousand set of separate talents. So, in the other one twenty-five, that's where you're talking about your variable expenses, your generators, your lights, um, your power fencing, porta potties, you know, labor, all of that stuff wasn't corrupted there. So, that's variable depending on what you do with it. You know, obviously, you don't need as much fencing if you don't have a concert or, you know, you've got different variables. Uh, the fireworks, talking about still doing that, you now have an issue with daylight. Uh, is daylight saving time still in October? Your sun doesn't go down till six point three. So, we would have to shift, either shift the time of the festival or add additional things in order to be able to see fireworks at the time if you're not gonna have any music. So, I mean, there are a lot of different variables going to this. There's a big space here. You're not gonna have music from the time the post stake your kids' home, so the time for fireworks. Also, I would, I would add that the prices given on the contracts that the membership were resigned was based on then, uh, we gave at six o'clock. So, now if we need extended, the prices are real low. Um, either that or we shifted. So, there's different variables out there.
Let me ask something else. Because I know, like, whenever we had, used to get Josh Ward and then we used to get Jason and them to play at, uh, Spetzen's or, or anything, any part venues, uh, they bring their own equipment. I mean, they got, they got trailer loaded equipment that they carry with them. I mean, but why should we have to? Well, they, if I have a try, I could be wrong, but they won't play unless you have a certain sound system that they have to approve and it has to be. In other words, it can't be something that's gonna make them look bad and then they're stuck on YouTube. Look like they don't know what they're doing. With that, why don't they bring their own stuff?
Yeah, and that takes a long time to set up here now.
Some of the contracts do have diagrams of exactly how things need to be set up or what they expect. So, you know, you get that. Uh, and I do know that with the last Fire Knights and the company that we used to set up the stage, they, that price did include a lot of their own equipment in staging and the stuff they did as for the last option they did.
But that was pre-labor too, that stayed. Plus, they had to be real careful not to step it up on them after.
One answer, yeah. But the planning that, that y'all have already put into it is planned around the bands that we're going to be playing. So, if we do this and we still them down, we need to count on them after the festival itself. If you have this time set up or whatever because of the daylight. I mean, instead of starting the bands earlier in the day, we would start them later in the day and have them towards the end.
We currently have bands starting out at three, three thirty, later in the day. And there were only eight acts. Based on previous planning, there were five with that budget. Um, that they had sixty minutes sets with thirty minutes breaks in between to move equipment. And then the final act we had as a ninety minute act. And the fireworks could have either gone before that final act at around eight thirty-ish or they could have gone following the final act at same night, thirty.
Because it has to be dark.
Yeah, it has to be dark. And, and unlike January where it got dark at five o'clock.
Right.
Uh, this, the sunset is at six point three. So, you're probably looking at seven thirty before you have completely dark.
So, so basically where we're at, the board either has decided they wanna do it for the children. Children with adults are gonna do it at all. And it's not gonna be the not do it at all. It's gonna be either scaled out with music or not. So, that's kinda where we're at. So.
I, I would say this, if it's, if we cannot get the, uh, something in line by the time that we got it in line, then I'll go along with not having a band. But first of all, we gotta see if we can get that entire line, if we get it in, then I'll, then I'll go to the band. If we cannot, then I'll agree, just do it without the bands and then next year we can do it. Or, so, but I would love to have, uh, at least a couple, what, a couple of weeks or less to find out if we can even secure any kind of a band. But I would go along, if we don't have a band, I mean, can't get the band, then I'll go along with, then I'll, I'll be fine with Fire Knights, do it for the kids and, and, um, put, put a beer drinking, uh, bug oil behind the bar for the grownups and, and go that route.
But that's another thing I was gonna suggest too is, I know y'all wanna go to the places I go. But Caryelope is super big, super big out there. If we just set up a tent and have, have a little beer thing where they're just right there, I'll guarantee you that place will be packed with people trying to do it in Caryelope. And DJ probably will cost you three, four hundred bucks.
Well, if, you know, if, if we couldn't get a band, then that would be the second option, you know? You could do that and they'll be away from the kids.
Um, anytime you invite communities, kids, K through twelve, and each of our ISDs have different band programs. College has a band program. Just anytime, some have orchestra. Um, if we ever thought about having our high schools participate and showcase some of their musical, musical talents. If you would bring out the parents, you'd bring out their supporters in the school, um, just something else to consider. Or have an act with the bands. Yeah, and what, you know, the cost there would be very cheap.
We do that for our Go Petting event. We have, we invite all the parts from all the schools. And we have like intercollegiate choirs that come out and they, they all have good performances, you know? And the kids look forward to that and they have their jump rope contest and stuff like that.
Every April, the college hosts, um, Humble ISD in the College Art Festival. This last April, we had over seven thousand people there in one day.
That's a great idea. That's another idea. So, if we can, you know, that is something that we can look to. If we can't get a pretty good band, then maybe we'll fall back on that end and we still get away, get out of the, uh, money, uh, or the.
Expenses of the.
The expense of the band, I'm trying to say, the expense of the band, of, of the hundred thousand or whatever it is, get back. And if we're gonna do this for our community, then I'm, I'm a hundred percent in doing it, having our local people to do it. Sundance Head, nobody really knew who he was. Of course, he went to, he got on, uh, American Idol first and then he got on his voice second. But when he performed out here, it would just Sundance Head with, with Roy, his daddy. I've known his daddy for years. I never did know Sundance that much. But, but then once, once he made that, then the, the first year we ever had an entertainer for the East Montgomery County Fair, we hired, uh, I didn't want to get his name.
Who?
Tracy Lawrence. Uh, Tracy Lawrence. We hired Tracy Lawrence. With Tracy Lawrence, we hired him for, I think, like twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, twenty.
He just happened to win the entertainer of the year just before he came to our event. We already have, we made fifty something thousand dollars on that event for the East Montgomery County Fair. So, I'm just saying, you know.
And already had him under contract, but he won that.
And Sundance and Roy performed together at Rock the Ranch?
They did.
They were together, they performed together and, and that was really, I mean, and again, he was just Sundance.
The only, the only problem with our kids, and I'm all for you because, um, is that's right on the football stadium. But undoubtedly, there's not a game there because of the issues to property during that time.
We had, one, one of the things, we do have a swim meet that's going on. So, it limits the availability of getting in and off the property a little bit. So, we're working through some of those issues on setup. But there is a, you know, we, we just got logistics working with the school district there. They have a huge swim meet there that weekend that we're, um, it's limiting some of the use of the parking lot, but we're, we're working through that.
My biggest concerns are cost and if she has time to put together what you need to put together.
Well, we need to make sure that bands are not, that the high school bands are not involved in their marching competitions and, you know, whatever the physical is.
That's the question for margin, margin part.
We need to check and make sure before we commit.
But there may be a way that should, okay.
So, we need to make sure before we. But let's, I, I think the best thing to do is, let's, uh, see what we can get as far as numbers go. Um, and meet again in a week, ten days, two weeks, something like that, and then, uh, discuss the issue again. See where we're staying. Do we need a motion, Captain? Do we need a motion to do that?
I think Frank, I need a motion to know what it is you're asking.
They're not sure you know.
Man, just, just give us the ideas. So, how much, how much you want to spend on bands? If you want bands. If you don't want bands, then what do you wanna do? So.
We're, I tell you how much we want to spend. Tea?
Well, I think what, I, I think that what we wanna do is find out what we could, if, if we save thirty thousand dollars, what can, is that a feasible, I mean, I don't know.
I think if we.
If we do one or two?
If we knew how much money we wanted to spend on it and we didn't go over that, there's no obstacle of the ticket sales to have to rely on. So, we know what we're spending, we know what we're getting into, we don't go over it, uh, we're gonna be good.
All right, let me go back to this. I think one of the, I think that we had, I had asked you, can you, can you find out what it would cost for three or four bands? Can you get bids or estimates or something and then bring that to us, the cost? And then we can decide from that, rather than a set of amounts.
Yeah, we'll, we'll tend to do that. But do you have a general idea? I mean, again, if, it, it's not, that, that's not how it works, you know, say, "Hey, I want you to come play." And their, their first number's always high. So, if, you know, that's, it's, it's a negotiation that goes back and forth. So, if you need, just give us a ballpark number. And at least we know, we, we need to tell you we're gonna pass or, okay, let's talk a little bit more and see if we can get you down a little bit. So, I just need to know.
Is fifty thousand reasonable? That's half of what?
That's why I was supposed to say fifty, you know, fifty, uh, take half of the budget, take fifty thousand and if you can do it with that, then that's reasonable. That's what I, that's what I would.
Negotiate some money like Sundance and then just have a bunch of small, maybe a thousand dollar band to turn on top of that.
I don't think we need, I don't think we only need to make it one or, you know, maybe two bands at the most.
Well, Sundance, we know it's thirty-five thousand. He's, he's that much for sure.
But he can negotiate.
He's, you have to negotiate with his talent, with his agent, and I don't, I don't, I don't know that, you know.
Well, I, I personally think, I mean, that just makes, but I know Sundance, I think that's.
Not his decision.
I think that if we approach him, he knows where, where all of his support came from and got it where he's at now into his district.
But I think it was brought up to him that, um, his wife had said, "I wish you would have called me a week or two earlier." But she was still handling this stuff. So, I don't know what kind of contract he has with the management company. He may not be able to do that.
But that's not what this Nick asked.
But we don't, we don't have that for Sundance.
No, we don't have that.
Hey, another thing we also need to find out, I mean, I know they have equipment. So, maybe instead of setting up a, renting a bunch of equipment, maybe if they furnish their own equipment, then they may just charge a little bit more.
They forget the band and tell them, you know, this is, uh, because, uh, Josh Ward, they playing these beer dogs and stuff. They, they.
Oh, and they don't, and they say, "Don't do it."
They don't, they don't have a special bag. And if they wanna eat, then eat before they get there.
That's why you gotta hire an expert to deal with the things.
They only, they wanna pass up their review. They wanna, they wanna hire up for business.
Yeah, we don't need to do it.
Please, please, no.
Tell me if this, if this is.
Don't we already have all the shows?
Yes, I think there was.
Hold on, I think it's, it's gonna read us.
What, what, what I heard from the last exchange, and feel free to tell us if you don't, I don't have a pride, but it would be that you want Frank to put together a package of two, four bands, spending up to a maximum of fifty thousand dollars and to evaluate the requirements and to report this award within one week, ten days, something like that.
I think that that's, I think that that's what it is. So, I can second that motion. Yeah, first we have to get somebody to make the motion.
I have one other question real quick. What is, what is the five forty-two motions? What is her role in this, this Fire Knights or their role?
Their, their role is only on two items as of right now. Their, their role is only on two items as of right now. First is talent acquisition, and the second being, uh, staging production, and that's it. That's the only, that's the only role that they have in this event.
And can we take?
They still have it, I know we want you better than that.
Again, all y'all need to tell us is what you'd like to do, and we're happy to do it.
After what they filed, nobody said, I can't tell anybody anything. They, they should have been by a long time ago.
So, yeah.
I get it, just tell us.
I think we need to look at somebody else, local, that knows all these bands we're talking about, that they, we can vet that and choose that as a board.
I would like that for two nights.
That's, we're gonna count on your expertise there, so.
I feel that.
Just, uh, you know. Contract ends September first.
Yeah.
It's the same.
I don't.
We'll, we'll take a look, I don't, this very second, I don't have it in front of me, we could look at it.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
So, we'll do the first one first, and then decide what we wanna do with the second one.
Yes, so we need a motion or David said?
Say it. Uh, here's what I think, uh, that, uh, that you want Frank and the staff to put together a, a package of two to four bands, spending up to, now, you've seen fifty thousand dollars, and to evaluate the equipment and staging requirements, and report to the board in one week to ten days, on what he's got.
And to assess the contract with the.
Well, that's gonna be a second motion.
That'd be a second, second motion.
With five four-two entertainment? Yes, that'd be a second.
Okay.
I'm ready.
So you should make it, did you, are you making a motion for the?
I thought that we, that you remove five.
Well, wait, we're not there yet. We need a motion on what David said about giving Frank.
I'll have that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion, uh, by Director Rogers, and a second by Director Pearson. Is there any more discussion on that?
On the entertainment side, that you're, are trying, that we're gonna try to get a package put together for. Now, what are we gonna do for staging, or is that, is you gonna, is a band gonna tell you what they want for staging, or are we gonna, I know we gotta provide some kind of stage, right?
Leonard, I put that.
Setup.
Leonard, I put that in the, in the package of the motions, if, if you wanna continue with it, but it was for Frank to pull that out of the contract, evaluate it, see what he really needed, and come back, and at the same time, he comes back with the bands, with a recommendation on what you need in the way of staging.
Would we need to add that to it?
Add a lot of stuff.
Oh, it's already in the.
Okay.
I got my ear on, but I didn't hear.
Okay, so all in favor of that motion as it stated? And that's, okay, and opposed? We have one opposed, okay? And so the motion passes?
And I, it is, I'm opposed because I just don't believe they're gonna have the time to put that together, and I'm just not in the mood to spend more money on entertainment at this point, and soon do it for the kids, and leave it at that.
And then we need a motion for five four-two entertainment to remove them from the.
The moment.
Okay, we'll wait and look at the contract then. Okay, okay.
You might not can.
Well, we're gonna look and see. So, is there any other discussion before we recess to executive session? Okay, then we are going to recess to executive session to discuss real property matters pursuant to section five five one point zero seven two, Texas Government Code, pending or contemplated litigation pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one, Texas Government Code, matters in which the duty of the attorney to the district under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Popo of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one, Texas Government Code, and economic development negotiations pursuant to section five five one point zero eight seven, Texas Government Code. And we are in recess at six twenty-six. We're back in session at, uh, seven forty-eight, and the next item is, uh, matters for placement on future agendas. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned, seven forty-eight.